So desires to stand for a moment of silence or a personal prayer. And then after that, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
So desires to stand for a moment of silence or a personal prayer. And then after that.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting for April 12th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesdays of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. These meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Rono County's website at www.ronocountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphone at the podium. And individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the Clerk of the Board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And please turn off all your cell phones or put them on silent. Item A on our agenda is opening ceremonies, roll call. Adam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters, Mrs. Hooker.
Here.
Mr. Norworth.
Here.
Mr. Radford.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here. Let me state for the record that Jason Peters is not with us today. He is having a medical procedure done. And I think many of you know that Jason has been very transparent about his medical issues. And so he is unable to join us today. Request to postpone add or change the order of agenda items. Any board members want to change anything? Mr. Kaywood.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubek.
No changes, sir.
Thank you.
Very loud.
Item C1, a resolution approving the Rono County Public Schools budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 upon certain terms and conditions. We have the Chairman, Mr. Linden. We also have Dr. Nicely and Susan Peterson, Director of Finance. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We're so pleased to be with you this afternoon and ask for your approval of our budget. Well, as Ms. Peterson, of course, give the details. But just wanted to say a few brief remarks and to say that acknowledge in a way of appreciation that in Virginia, of course, Boards of Supervisors and City Councils have the statutory authority to approve appropriations from the, from the school boards and school divisions. I just count as fortunate here in Rono County to acknowledge that it's more of a, it's less of a sense of obligation or a sense of duty that I think that our Board here in Rono County performs, but rather it's a sense of commitment. And I know that along with the responsibility to work with us comes a true sense of dedication, commitment, a passion for making sure that students, you know, all 13,000 plus of them in 27 schools and 2,100 employees, that we do that in the most excellent way possible and adequately fund. School Division, which I hope you're proud. I know that we're proud and want to make sure that our community and citizens in Rono County are proud of as well. So just thank you so much for your support. And with that, we'll turn it over to Ms. Peterson for the presentation.
Instead of a sense of commitment, I thought it was a sense of pleasure. Pleasure and joy. Ms. Peterson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. On behalf of Rono County Public Schools, it is our pleasure to present our 2022, 2023 annual budget for your consideration. This school board adopted budget reflects an investment of $228.2 million for the students of our community. The amount is divided among 13 funds and will be included in two budget ordinances. The operating ordinance is $226,071,926 and will include all funds except for the capital projects funds. The capital ordinance of $2,165,214,000 will include our major and minor capital projects funds. I would like to take a few minutes now to review each of our funds at a very high level. In the general fund, this is our main operating fund and is budgeted for $172.1 million and is 75% of our total budget. Most of our state revenue is based in March 31, average daily membership. So estimating student enrollment is always a critical step to building our budget. We used grade progression calculations to arrive at an estimate of 13,183 students for next year. This is an increase of 96 students from the current year budget amount of 13,087. And this is a small uptick from the enrollment declines that we saw during the pandemic. And we do hope to see this continue. For the 2022, 2023 annual budget, this school division expects net revenue in the general fund to increase by $15.7 million. This is made up mostly by state revenue of $8 million, an increase from the transfer from the county of $5.7 million, along with adding in the transfer for CSA of $1.9 million. Finally, we estimate an additional $117,040 in non-resident tuition and Medicaid billing increases, which is offset slightly by $13,000 for a slight reduction in church rentals. This year, our school board really focused on our employees. As you recall, on January 11th, the Board of Supervisors view approved an ordinance for our request to fund a mid-year pay raise to address a critical shortage of nutrition workers and instructional assistants, along with certain other related positions and grades at the bottom of our pay plan. The school division included $2.4 million in next year's budget to continue these raises. In addition, this school division included $6.1 million to fund a 6% scale shift for our teachers and our non-teachers to provide all employees a 6% raise. This will bring our beginning teacher pay rate to $42,734 and will keep us in the ballpark with our neighbors, or at least similar neighbors. The school division has allocated $375,905 towards our early retirement program, a new ELL teacher, a new Navy Cadet Corps teacher, which is a program we will bring in back in-house next year, increasing athletic director, bus driver, bus aide, and bus lot attendant contracts, and adding or increasing certain athletic stipends. We also budgeted a $750,000 reduction for payroll lapse. Our next budget was in replenishing the $3.4 million of transfers to our various replacement plans that were deferred during the COVID-19 reductions. Then we added $1.9 million for the CSA transfer, which will offset the revenue increase. We added the $300,000 for the joint capital funding policy to increase to the 171717 debt arrangement plan for the construction plan, for construction planning. Our final $2 million was allocated for a variety of items, including vendor contracts, fuel increases, stadium field maintenance, athletic allotments, flood insurance, and other instructional needs. So that is a highlight of our general fund, and I'll move into our other funds. The Instructional Resources Fund is budgeted for $2 million and is used to purchase textbooks and electronic resources for the classroom based on a seven-year textbook adoption plan that does coincide with the Commonwealth's Plan. Our plan lays out both the large one-time adoption purchases along with the recurring subscriptions by subject area. In 2022, 2023, we will finish funding the science materials adoption that we adopted this year, CTE, ELL, and world language adoption materials, along with recurring subscriptions for history, English, and music classes. State revenues are budgeted to increase by $270,679 and the transfer from the general fund is budgeted to increase by $385,220. The fleet replacement fund is budgeted for $1.6 million and is used to purchase buses and other vehicles based on a 15-year replacement plan. This plan schedules replacements based on the model year of the vehicle to ensure that the fleet does not age to a point where the cost to maintain each individual vehicle exceeds the replacement cost of that vehicle. In 2022, 2023, we will replace 10 school buses and 10 other vehicles. Most of the revenue in this fund is a transfer from the general fund, which is budgeted to increase by $1.2 million. The technology replacement fund is budgeted for $5.7 million and is used to purchase technology infrastructure and equipment on a six-year replacement plan. This plan schedules replacements based on the warranty life of the equipment. In 2022, 2023, we will lease equipment for cameras, computers, Promethium boards, radios, and servers. In addition, we will pay for radio and server licenses and pay for IP telephony, network, and wireless equipment. Revenue is derived from state federal E-rate reimbursements and transfers from the general fund. State revenues are budgeted to increase by $158,569 and the transfer from the general fund is budgeted to increase by just over $1 million. The major capital fund is budgeted for $1.4 million and is used to accumulate the cash funding for the acquisition or construction of major capital projects. This fund includes the capital improvement plan. Since it is the county's year for debt allocation, our CIP funding is smaller and includes cash amounts only for the W E Kundaf and Glencoe Elementary Schools. And our major, or in our minor capital fund, it is budgeted for $794,857 and it includes $419,857 for CMP. Although it is our desire to fully fund the CMP through the original budget, just like we did during the pre-pandemic times, this is one area where we have, the last little area that we've not been able to go back to our pre-pandemic transfers. We did discuss and obtain approval and guidance with the county administration to fund the remaining 580,143 of our CMP from our year-end carryover, which we do expect to have plenty of. Other small amounts that are in the minor capital fund includes music uniforms and the replacement reserves for all three of our turf fields that are jointly funded through donations from the county. The grant fund, moving on, is budgeted for $8.2 million and is funded by federal, state, and local grantors and spent in accordance with the required grant guidelines. The student activity fund is budgeted for $7.3 million and includes all activities of the students at the school level, including but not limited to just athletics and athletics. The nutrition fund is budgeted for $7 million and is used to provide nutritious breakfasts and lunches for students. Throughout the pandemic and until June of, June 30th of 2022, the federal government extended certain waivers to fund all meals served to students, regardless of their free and reduced eligibility. This alleviated the need to sell meals for Rono County Public Schools. And so currently, what we are hearing is that these waivers will end and the federal government will not be extending them. And so for next school year, we will be returning back to normal nutrition programs. What this means for our staff is that the skeleton crew that we had, if you recall, when I came back in, in January, I'll let you know, we were sorely understaffed in our cafeterias. So what this means is that skeleton crew will have additional duties to ensure that our meals are prepared in accordance with the stringent guidelines that we had waivers from that follow the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act. We'll have to make sure we have people to serve the food and people to run cash registers next year. So to qualify, to attract quality staff through these tough economic times, we are continuing to focus on our employees. The 6% scale shift previously mentioned will increase our starting wages for nutrition associates to $15.16 an hour. We are returning the full-time health and dental insurance benefits that were previously taken away, and we are offering a recruitment and retention bonus for our nutrition associates. The next four funds have been in use for many years. However, we have not budgeted them directly. We have budgeted through them indirectly through transfers from the general fund. We would like to go ahead and begin budgeting them for 2022, 2023. They have always been included in our year-end financial reports, though. This is similar to practice that the county has followed. However, they started budgeting them a few years ago. This includes the health insurance fund, which we have budgeted for $19.9 million. And it is a self-insured fund to account for our healthcare costs for our employees who choose the program. Our dental insurance fund, which is budgeted for $1.7 million, it is fully insured and it will cover the costs of this program for employees who elect to participate in our program. The risk management fund, which is budgeted for $383,500. This is a self-insured fund up to the point where we are in the pool with our vendor. It is used to account for the workers' compensation costs for employees injured on the job. And finally, our OPEM trust fund is budgeted for $132,820 and was created in fiscal year 2012. It accounts for assets held for and costs of other post-employment benefits. It does include a $92,290 contribution from the health insurance fund into reserve that will be held to pay for future health, retiree health benefits. Rono County Public Schools is a top-rated school division, operating at high-performing levels and high-performing programs, while we are remaining very prudent stewards of the taxpayers' money. We value the strong relationship that we have with Rono County staff, Rono County Administration, and Rono County Board of Supervisors. We are very happy to be able to provide educational opportunities for the students of our community. And I do thank you for allowing us the opportunity to bring a budget forward for your consideration. So if you have any questions, I can answer them or I can move along with our presentation.
Questions? Questions? One question. Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan, good presentation. Just one question. I didn't have anything to do Monday, so I pulled this up. And it, I had a squint to read it. It's the Report of the Elementary and Secondary Education Subcommittee, FY23 Distribution Summary. And it shows Rono County's ADM projection. It shows the, the base at $87.8 million for FY22, our current year. And then it says that if all goes well, we should see $96.1 million, which is 8.3 million over the base at 9.3% growth. Looking at page eight of the presentation, it shows the 2023 budget at 91.1. I know the General Assembly is struggling to get a budget passed. And so some of these numbers are probably close, but maybe a little premature, even though we'll approve your budget today. Can you comment on that difference?
Sure. So we based our revenues on the House budget. When we come to crossover, we always look at the House and the Senate budget. The House was lower, so we base our budget on that. Then we take the revenues that are in the calculator tool. The state lumps them into different categories, SOQ, category-funded, lottery-funded, and incentive. We take each of those pots of money and drop them in different grants, in different funds. And so some of it's in the general fund, some of it may be in the technology fund, in the grant fund, and so on.
And so the devil's in the details and the money's in there. It just didn't show up in that one category.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Radford.
Yeah. Were we going to talk, any more, any more presentation?
Well, I think Mr. Linden may have had some things to say.
Okay. Let's, let's hear him.
I just wanted to thank the Board for, for their commitment, Chairman Mahoney and fellow Board members. We've, we're very pleased with the budget that Ms. Peterson has put together. We feel like we've been fiscally conservative to a point, but we did feel the need to make sure we give our employees a 6% raise, which, which they seem to be excited about. And we truly appreciate the 171717. I know that had been at 101010 for a while and then up to 121212 recently. Your commitment to the schools and, and our ability to improve our schools has not gone unnoticed, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. So the numbers are all Ms. Peterson. If you have any, Mr. Radford, if you have any other questions, we'll need to get it back to her.
No, no, stay up there, Dave, but I'm going to ask you the question.
Yes, sir.
No disflavors.
Yeah, that's right. And you can, you can ask whoever you want for assistance. So the capital improvement for the schools, I see where you've put the CTE up in, in the third slot with the 1717. We have a Citizens Committee meeting about that right now. And I've heard different variations on square footage. I noticed in your report, you've got 210,000 square feet. I've heard anywhere from 120, 150, 170. Do y'all have any sense where you are with that at this point?
The committee is still working on that, and I know that they're exploring that. We had a meeting last week with the Chairman, Mr. Haltizer, and they have not come up yet with a definitive square footage. It made 210. It may, 210 may be a little bit larger than we need, but we don't have a definitive number yet.
Okay, so that number could move.
Yes.
Okay. A second question, or second, yeah, second question. So in February 1st, 2018, Virginia House Bill 2192, Article III, about public school buildings and facilities modernization, it's in regards to standards for buildings and facilities, and I'm just going to read it to you real quick. "It is the intent of the General Assembly that new public school buildings and facilities improvements and renovations to existing public school buildings and facilities be designed, constructed, maintained, and operated to generate more electricity than consumed, and that such energy-positive building design be based on industry standards. Number one, contained in the Design Guide of the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers, and better known as ASHRAE, entitled Advancing Zero Energy Advanced Energy Design Guide for K through 12 Buildings, and any subsequent updates and/or similar industry standards." So my question is, are you guys adhering to that? Are we seeing energy-positive schools being designed going forward? Because I see we got Cave Spring, we got that finished, and now we're in the middle of Williamburg getting that done. So it's a philosophical question. Are we moving toward energy-positive building designs for these elementary schools, the CTE? What's, what's the flavor? What's going on?
I know that's being considered for BCAT, for our new facility there. Why, no, we've not gotten into the design phase yet on Kundiff or Glencove, so I don't, I don't believe that's been explored yet, not to my knowledge. Dr. Nicely?
No.
Is it certainly something that we will have them look into? We're not opposed to that.
Okay, very good.
Probably the best example of that most recently, Mr. Radford, would be the brand-new school construction over Mason's Cove, where we have, you know, it's a LEED-certified building, and certainly there are a lot of design elements in that facility that would, would speak to the CO section that you're referencing there.
Yeah, so it's, it's really heading toward energy positive. I know I've been Mason's Cove, and that's a spectacular building. It's got a lot of passive stuff, and I think it's got geothermal.
Right.
Out in, in the field. I just want to make sure we're still heading in that direction. I know it might be a difference of opinion about geothermal versus solar, so I just want to make sure that's on everybody's radar, even us. We'd like to consider for our buildings, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No question, but just more a, a comment for benefit of many of our citizens who may be watching. You know, we've talked about it, but I want to emphasize, you folks went through a process to try to develop a budget, but the General Assembly hasn't given you and us a final set of numbers. And so I'll, we, we hope that the General Assembly will fulfill its duties and responsibilities in a timely fashion, and according to law, they're supposed to do it by June 30th, so I hope they don't go to the last minute. But I would expect that you're probably going to be coming back to us whenever, whenever the General Assembly acts and whenever you get those final numbers from the Department of Education. So just to let all our citizens know, this is round one, and there's going to be probably some tweaks or changes or amendments to what you will be doing. So we'll, hopefully we'll see you soon, and that the General Assembly doesn't delay this forever. But again, for, for purpose of our citizens, by statute, school board had to come forward, had to submit a budget. We know that you need to be able to issue teacher contracts for next year, and you've done that on the basis of the more conservative House budget, and we'll see what comes from Richmond soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just another side comment. You probably saw it in the papers or online, but Bedford County is going through challenging times with their schools, and they are looking at solar in the renovations of some of their schools, elementary and otherwise. So this is creeping north from the South, in South Carolina, and North Carolina, they've been doing it. So, you know, if we can save money beyond what we're doing, doing over at Mason's Cove in terms of solar panels, I mean, I would be opposed to solar panels being put on our new fire station if it were to be efficient, or on any of our new future projects in the county. So thank you very much.
Bedford County is also moving forward, or looking at moving forward with their CTE school, which I hope is something that, that we can do quickly as well, relatively.
We do, too, and I look forward to that one day.
Thank you.
Unless there are any other questions, we do have a resolution in our agenda, a resolution approving Roanoke County Public Schools budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make just a quick disclosure, saying that I am an employee of Rona County Schools. I'm actually a retired employee of Rona County Schools, and Rona County Schools is a great organization, a great school to work for. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for the Rona County Public Schools budget for fiscal year 22, 23.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Huckor?
Yes.
Mr. Nelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Item C2 on our agenda. This is a resolution approving Roanoke Regional Airport Commission budget for fiscal year 22, 2022, 2023. Mr. Stewart? Mr. Powers?
I was going to say, I'm joined today by Gary Powers, Roanoke County Appointee to the commission, David Evans, our Director of Finance.
Welcome.
And the one that's going to get all the hard questions if you have. So in accordance with the requirements of the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission contract, which was dated back in January of 1987, as amended, we are required to come forward to the county as well as the city of Roanoke and the city of Salem for approval of our budget. I will get to the most important piece here in that we are not asking you for any money. They make it easy for you. We also have included in addition to our O&amp;M budget a list of $100,000-plus capital expenditures that are expected over the next few years that have a life expectancy of five years or more. The, the highlights of the budget are that based on, we're basing it on 75% of the 2019 employment numbers at the airport. We're being a little bit conservative because we're seeing about 80% right now, but given the, the fuel prices and pilot shortages and everything else, we felt it better to be a little conservative going in. But we still end up in very good shape. Our operating revenues were projecting 70 million, 115 against operating expenses of 10 million, 150. And that does include about 6.8 million in government grants, federal government grants, pandemic grants. Even without that, we're projecting being in the black on the budget, which is a good thing in this time, in this industry. On our, as you go down the list, 6 million that you see a big jump, 2.5 million on the revenues for terminal-related revenues. That's really related to higher-than-expected revenues from the parking lot and the rental cars. Both of those bounced back a little faster than everything else has. And really, everything else is pretty much in line with where we've been in the past, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'm thrilled to be here for the first time with you.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
One question, yes. Mike, welcome, and I'm just excited about the improvement you all have been making out there over the years. I can remember when it was Piedmont Terminal that wasn't in its current location, and we've come a long way. We, we get off the plane and, you know, we feel proud to be coming home to a nice terminal, and I've traveled around the United States much in my previous career, and there weren't many airports the size of Roanoke or otherwise that were attractive when you get off the plane. Do you anticipate getting any additional grants, or has it been determined what the infrastructure bill means to the Roanoke Airport?
There's, there's about $15 million out of the, the infrastructure bill that's been passed that is potentially coming to Roanoke. We have to obviously justify it with projects that, that meet the federal requirements. We are bringing, some of you may have been involved in the master plan update that we started a couple of years ago. That was put on hold during the interim period, and they've been educating me on everything in it and why I need to support it, but we're getting ready to bring that back out. That has a number of projects that could use that 15 million, which includes the runway extension, some terminal improvements. One thing we want to do is make sure the terminal is positioned for future growth and can accommodate it without losing that hometown feel and the customer service edge that we've got. So it's a, still more coming, but we've got to get in and jump through the hoops that the FAA and the federal government has for the, for those monies. But as we get those put into place, we do fully expect to use more of that money.
So we got about five years for the time.
Five, five years, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Mike, welcome also. Glad to have you onboard and having your first shot presenting the budget to us. I want to talk to you about trends in runway length. I know Roanoke City recently had a, an opportunity with a prospective client or tenant or, or project to be built over in a certain section, and that kinda, I think, has been put on hold, or it's, it's not being pursued any further. So it, it got me to having some conversations with people in the community about knowledge of air travel, and I'm hearing that runway lengths are not as important as the trend for the smaller regional jets going from point to point. As we try to extend from Roanoke to Texas, you know, in a couple of areas, I, I just wanted to get your, your thought and feel on that and where we're going with, if we really are ever going to need a runway extension.
We've got about 6,800 feet on our longest runway out there today, and for most aircraft that fly on the East Coast, that's sufficient runway. We're a little different, and I, as I said early on, I think in, in one group, those are longer runways than Reagan National Airport has. The difference is Reagan National doesn't have a ring of mountains around it, and it's not quite at our altitude. So you run into that, a little different scenario. Each airport's a little bit different. 8,000 to 7,700 linear feet is, is considered kind of the, the standard you would want if you start flying to the West Coast with, say, a Boeing 737. Boeing aircraft take a little more runway. Some of the, the regional jets require a little more runway to take on enough fuel and carry a full load. What ends up happening if you don't have enough runway and they're operating the flight already is they have to take weight restrictions. So they either leave people off, or they leave bags off, or both. So it's, optimally, you want to get a runway in place that can meet the needs and enable the travel. So if someone, if we were lucky enough to get a flight to Denver, we probably need a little more runway than we've got today for most aircraft types that are feasible for that type of route, certainly with the West Coast. For what we've got right now, what we have is sufficient. The runways out there are what they call non-standard runway safety areas on each end of the runway. Doesn't mean the airport's unsafe at all, but it means that over the time since that airport was built and their runways were extended, the FAA has changed their standard to put a thousand-foot safety area on each end of each runway. We don't quite have that. It's not, not a big deal, it's not something the FAA is pushing us to do, but about the only way to fix that is, would be to, to extend the runways across roadway or, you know, build a pier out over the north end of it, if you will. But the, really, the only feasible ways to go are going to be to Bridge 581 or by Valley Mall, and I don't think the latter is probably in the cards. But the, but there are some alternatives that are being studied that would extend that runway, and I can tell you that I won't come forward pushing an extension across 581 just for a runway safety area extension. We'd, we would want to extend the runway and go ahead and get it out there and have it capable to enable the service in the future. The length of the runway is not going to recruit air service force. We need to have the runway there to accommodate the air service by some aircraft, but that's, it's been batted around as the runway is kind of the bait for longer, longer runway brings more people. Not necessarily, but it certainly enables it for some aircraft type, some destinations.
Okay. So that's what I was thinking. You need the safety factor at the end of the runway.
Absolutely.
And whoever that landowner is that they're in on the other side, whether it's the city or private owner, whatever they do there might impede that or affect that. Is that?
Exactly.
Fair statement?
Exactly. And what we understand right now is they put that on hold, and they're going to come back and talk to us about what the property there might do, whether we want to acquire it or what they want to do with it. But we, we own about 37 acres over there now, the old countryside golf course.
Right.
They own somewhere around 100 acres. Some of that's developable, some of it's not.
Yeah.
But we're, we're certainly interested in what goes on over there.
Okay, great, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Adam Huck.
I wanted to say welcome. Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here tonight. I have always enjoyed flying out of the Roanoke Airport, much like Mr. North has mentioned, and I do quite often, and I've just been astounded at, at pricing right now. And so do you have any estimate? I know this is crystal balling here, but do you have any idea when prices will start to normalize?
I always use my first disclaimer that I don't work for the airlines, so I can't set the rates, but it's, I think what you're seeing right now is a result of a couple of things. One is the airlines are recovering from the pandemic, obviously. But the second is, is we're seeing a pretty dramatic increase in fuel, even though it's tapered off and kind of leveled the last couple of weeks. But the labor costs, bringing more aircraft online, they've got a pretty severe pilot shortage. So I think all of that is kind of combining, and at the end of the day, they're businesses, and, and they're pricing to what the market will bear. So one of the things you hear is talked about all the time is leakage, the, the traffic that drives somewhere else for cheaper fares or whatever the reason might be. We're trying to get out and convince the airlines that we can bring that big group of people back and fly them out of Roanoke if we get the right fares and the right schedules. So predicting it is very difficult. Usually, it's due to competition. So if we get competition, either we've got a, a new LaGuardia flight starting, so we'll have Delta and American both flying to LaGuardia. You may see a little pricing going on there to compete with each other.
That's great.
If we get somebody flying out of nearby airport that's beating our fares and pulling business, they'll see that in the data, and they'll adjust the fares accordingly. But I've also got a staff member that spends all of his time, most of his time, looking at those fare disparities and calling them out, the airlines, and asking for relief. And I certainly appreciate it, any help that we get from you. If you're flying and you had to pay more, please let them know about it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. I'm looking in to go to the Midwest like we do every summer, and there's some high stock prices on those fares. Let me just say that, and of course, you know, we're not going to drive, so we're going to have to pay what the market will bear. What's interesting was it's higher in July than in June, I guess in has to do with travel. Rental car prices are $300 in South Dakota in June. They're $1,043 for the same vehicle in July. I'm not going to pay $1,000 to rent a car for four or five days. The comment about if you, the, the extension of the runway, the devil's in the details, I, I sense, and then if you build it, they will come. Well, larger planes could come, and they carry more people, which means they might not have two flights a day, they might just have one because you can get more people on a larger plane. From the standpoint of freight, it could be beneficial, even though FedEx today, and I think UPS serve our facility with larger jets, they can maybe have larger ones. But the hidden devil in the details is economic impact, and, you know, you could commission a study whenever, what's the impact of extending the runway on benefits to the community and to the region? And I would think that it could be attractive to folks that want to relocate here in some, some sense, or to expand their operations that are headquartered elsewhere in the Roanoke Valley one day, and that could mean more jobs and so forth. Of course, you got to have the housing. Everything has to fit together, the housing, the jobs.
Right.
Et cetera. But this area has an attractiveness to, for people to locate here because of many benefits. And so I look forward one day, if you ever do an economic impact study, to hearing what that might say about, on the question of if you have a longer runway, what economic benefit could you derive? So good luck with all that.
Well, I can guarantee we'll have an economic impact study done. I'm, I'm trying to wait long enough that we don't use 2020 data, and then.
Right, exactly.
We'll, we'll have one done surely.
Exactly. You got to wait for things to get a little better.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, Mr. Stewart, thank you for an excellent budget. I guess I, my only comment is I wanted to emphasize how critically important the airport is to our region's economic development. The, the board put me on the, the SEDS Committee. The SEDS Committee is Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies for the Allegheny Regional Commission, and that's where- Development Strategies for the Allegheny Regional Commission. And that's where all the various local jurisdictions would put their wish list projects together. And I think our list was, I don't know, sixty or seventy different projects. And so I was able to push the, the SEDS Committee to try to boil that down to a manageable number. And we've done that last year. We're going to do it again this year. And we have seven projects that we've listed as priorities for the region. And one of them is additional flights and runway capacity for the airport. And I think that reflects how all of the jurisdictions in the region, how, how critically important they think the airport is to economic development. And yes, it's a great, so that, great idea that Mr. North could fly out to the Midwest for a vacation. I think it's more important for us so that we can draw those businesses and industries here because they, their people need to be able to fly different places, despite Zoom and everything else that has grown up over the last two years. So I do want to emphasize, and you know this better than I, but I want to emphasize to our citizens, airport is really critical to the economic viability of this community, not just now, but in the future. It's very important. And I applaud you and our other citizen members who are on the, on the Airport Commission Board because they're, they're very valuable to us and to everybody in the region.
And I, I appreciate those comments greatly because I do constantly tell people that the, the airport is an economic engine for the region.
Exactly.
And it's your airport, our airport, I just get to drive it. So there's no magic wands here, but everything we do is geared towards growing the economy of the region. And just wanted to plug, you talked about the, the arriving traffic. We start the new Allegiant Nashville flight on the twenty-first. And one of the things that's been very beneficial has been working with Virginia Tourism Corporation to do marketing in Tennessee to bring people here. So where a lot of people think Nashville's the destination on this flight, and it is in Allegiance's schedule, when you look at it, we're trying to pull people in here because at the end of the day, that's what makes the economic impact for us. So thank you for that.
With that, if there are no other questions, we do have a resolution approving the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the resolution on item C two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Noworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C three on our agenda, a resolution approving the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Dan Miles.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Mahoney and members of the board supervisors. Appreciate the opportunity to come here today. And on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Resource Authority and the authority's employees, we are pleased to present the FY twenty-three budget for the board's consideration today. The, the budget is pretty much a continuation of the current fiscal year. As you know, we are in the midst of operational changes. The FY twenty-three budget as presented is in the total amount of fourteen million eight-hundred-fifty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. That is the amazing difference of point one percent less than the current fiscal year. So when I say it's pretty much the same budget, it's pretty much the same budget. There are a couple of things that I would draw your attention to in the budget that compare the operational changes. Most notably, if you look at the disposal fees, our disposal fees are up approximately two and a half million dollars over the previous operational mode. Our use of the contingency reserve fund is not being used at all anymore. We have no plans to use contingency reserve fund to balance the budget. Our operating expenses are down approximately one million dollars. And the net result is that we're starting to replenish our reserve funds. So we are seeing that in the current fiscal year, we're contributing about three-point-one million dollars to the reserve funds for FY twenty-three. We are proposing an additional two-point-three million dollars to go into the reserve funds. The FY twenty-three budget does include a increase to the municipal tipping fee in the amount of a dollar fifty per ton. We're currently at fifty-five dollars per ton and that would go, I'm sorry, we're currently at fifty-three fifty a ton and it would go to fifty-five dollars a ton. So that would be about a two-point-eight percent increase in the tipping fees. We have not had a tipping fee increase in three years. With that, I would be pleased to try to answer any questions you may have or receive any comments you may have on our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a couple of items to note. One is that I noticed that we have the same number of employees and an increase of one hundred, a little more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars in salaries. And when trucking was first discussed, there was some mention of that being reduced. So just a, a note on that for the employees and the increase in efficiencies, but an increase in that expense. And then the second thing that I would like to note is that the, the host community fund I know is getting very close to its maximum amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And I would like to see that moved on, just for the benefit of that community, on however they decide to use it, that's appropriate for that community. But it needs to be used for the, for the citizens. And I would hate for that fund to get to the capacity and then still, you know, not be able to take advantage of that, of that money.
Okay, two responses. First, we have reduced our employee complement by two positions. The board did direct me to hire a business manager for, for our operations. So that adds another position to it. So we are, we're still at forty employees is our total number of employees. We were at forty-two employees two years ago. So we have reduced our employee complement. As far as the host community, you are correct, that fund is starting to approach its maximum allotment. We are in discussions right now with the Bradshaw Citizens Association about the possibility of using some of those monies for new internet services that I believe you're probably aware of that are coming down the Bradshaw Road area. And so I think they have got a lot of interest in being able to use some of their monies to be able to carry back to their residents in the host community for that particular purpose.
I applaud that. I would like it to be used as soon as possible if there can be agreement on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Noworth?
Mr. Radford? Got just a question about the market. So I know in the past you've been challenged by commercial haulers taking business elsewhere. How do you see that now that fuel prices are increasing? Do you see some shift of the long haul disposal and other landfills coming back to, to your landfill?
That's an excellent observation on your point, on, on your part. And that is true. We had already started seeing some return of that lost revenue from the commercial haulers. In fact, that's a bulk of where our increased revenues are coming from. But we are also seeing a specific push to try to take advantage of the direct haul to be able to utilize the, the new access going into the landfill as well. We are anticipating, hopefully by the time we come back next year with our budget, that we'd be looking at about another million and a half in additional revenues that we would anticipate coming online very soon.
Good. Secondly, does your current fleet put place a fuel surcharge or is that included in the rate that's contracted on an annual basis?
It's included in the rate on a contract basis.
How many trucks a day are you seeing? About thirty a day? Is that?
No, we're, we're seeing on average of about fifty, which is exactly what we had indicated, primarily during the, the warmer months, where we might hit a little more than fifty. But a good average for us is about fifty trucks a day.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking about the residential being about thirty. So I guess that includes the commercial and residential volumes.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And so is some of the commercial going directly to the fill today because of the road?
Yes, sir.
So it circumvents going to the transfer station?
That is correct.
And then being placed on the floor and reloaded again?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah. Dan, thanks for coming today and presenting the budget. So over in southwest county, we have, from developers' point of view, a stump dump. And the ownership of that property is getting up in age. And he wants to dispose of it. I know you've been having conversation with that, with that family. And I, I don't want us, it would hurt our community if it was closed. This, so this individual, he'll close it. Push comes to shove. I mean, he's just getting up there in age and don't want to fool with it anymore. I've mentioned that to you before, I think, and I've even mentioned it to Rebecca about us being able to take that over. And so I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on that, where we are, other than you don't have any money to do that.
Correct.
Is there some other way we can take that facility over? And I mean, it would be a gem to have. It would be a disaster for all of us developers to start having to take a five to six-ton stump and pay fifty-five dollars a ton for that. That would be very expensive when we have the ability to, to take it over to, to Mr. Vandy's landfill. Just wanted to kind of get your, what your thoughts are on that.
Oh, we have been in, in-depth conversation with the possibility of taking over that facility. We have discussed it with our board. In fact, our board is committed to doing due diligence to first determine if liability is a, an issue with us. We have looked at that. We've looked at the cost of being able to, to take over the operation. And when we couple that with all of the other construction activities that are currently in place with the amount of staff that we've got that we can dedicate it, dedicate to being able to take over that operation, we are just, right now, are not in a position to be able to, to, to look at doing that. We have confirmed with the owner of the facility that they are not looking to close that facility. They are looking at bringing in other employees to continue to run the facility. And so we have been in conversation with them about that as well.
Depends on which week it is when I talk to Mr. Vandy. But, so there's, I understand, we, you know, we've got budgets we have to amend to. You know, to me, I thought that that, that site was profitable. It was, they were making money. I'm not, I don't know, you know, it's a private entity. But the fact that they've spent a lot of money on all those permits, those permitting are very valuable. I don't know if we could get one today with the DEQ requirements that are, that are needed to do that. So I just don't want it, if that, if he doesn't close it, that's great today, but I don't know about tomorrow. So I just hope you guys are able to figure something out. I'd, I'd hate for that to happen. I know when we're developing in Franklin County real close, we'll bring our material up, up into Roanoke County, up into that stump dump area, just to handle that. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dan, sort of crystal balling, because I read the, the report from Draper Aiden about some of the, the costs and expenses to do new cells. Looking forward down the road, ten, twenty years, are, are we, are we using up, are we using up the available space quicker than what was originally planned back thirty-some years ago? Or are we pretty much on target in terms of what had been estimated as the potential usage and potential develop for, development for future cells? Are we on target? Are we, are, are alarm bells going off that we're, we're putting more in than we had anticipated?
No, sir, just the opposite, actually. We, when the landfill was first opened, the life expectancy was calculated on maximum annual tonnage reaching the facility. We have never reached maximum annual tonnage at that facility. In fact, we have been running about two-thirds of maximum annual capacity for the bulk of our existence. So we have substantial life still remaining on that facility. In fact, where we are right now, we, we are currently permitted, our, our permitted area has about thirty-seven to thirty-eight years of remaining capacity, but that is our fully permitted area. We still have another twelve-hundred acres of property that is eligible for permitting and for development for landfill purposes. So we have in excess of a hundred years of disposal capacity at that site. In my opinion, I believe that technology is going to continue to develop. And as it develops, the cost of, of handling of the waste and minimizing the amount we put into the landfill is going to continue to decrease. It happens with every technology, including garbage, that the cost goes down. Necessity is truly the mother of invention. They, they find better ways to build bigger and better mousetraps. So it's happening in the solid waste industry. But where we are now is building our, our, our tonnages up to the point where we would be an attractive entity for a developer of one or more of these developing technologies to come in and put forward the, the capital that's necessary to convert to a plasma arc technology or a, a dirty murph to, to recycle all the materials. There are a number of technologies that are out there, but they're still on the cutting edge. And in my opinion, there's what I would call the bloody cutting edge because it's still on the forefront. So as we allow some of these technologies to develop, they learn from their mistakes. They find ways to, to, to build them, operate them, less expensive, more efficiently. So we are postured to be able to watch the development of these technologies. And as one or more of the technologies continues to develop and proves to be beneficial to our region, then we would have the latitude to be able to move at our own discretion towards one or more of these technologies. That ultimately is going to greatly reduce our reliance on landfilling. I'm not aware of any technology right now that's going to completely eliminate landfills for a solid waste management tool. But there are many out there that are greatly reducing it.
That's good news. Next, finally, I saw the, in the materials about the old landfill on Ruchtraut Road. And you, you're confident that DEQ is happy and we don't have to do anything else with, with that old legacy facility?
Right now, we are in a, we're in a monitoring phase. As you know, there was contamination that was found at that landfill. We are in a demonstration period now that is essentially sitting back and letting Mother Nature take its course. Throughout the course of time, we have always run and, and operated in societies with dump sites. They are ubiquitous. I mean, they, they are everywhere in the world. So Mother Nature has got a very good capacity to be able to absorb what mankind throws at her. And so the Ruchtraut Road landfill is no different. That what we're seeing is that in our sampling, that over the course of time, the contaminants are truly decreasing. I do not think that we will ever be able to wipe our hands and say, this is a clean, pristine site. But it is going to get to the point in time where the level of contamination is going to allow better use of the facility, maybe more recreational purposes, particularly where it is positioned right next to Explorer Park. And as you know, we have done a lot of development with Explorer Park and with Greenways, looking to use passive recreation on that site. So I think we're going to continue to see that. But the key is continuing to closely monitor that groundwater, make sure that it is staying there on site, it's not migrating. And we see no indication right now that that, that anything other than that is occurring.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Go ahead.
So when we were talking about, when you were talking about the capacity a little bit ago, and I just wondered, how many acres have been purchased since the original landfill opened? Because I know that our capacity has continued to increase, but some of that is because of the continued purchasing for adjacent properties, I think.
We, well, we have not purchased a tremendous amount. We, well, we have not purchased a tremendous amount of property. We, not counting the, the rail corridor that we, that was conveyed to the authority. We have purchased about 120 acres. But none of that property that we have purchased is designated for landfill space. It's all buffer space. So where it's located, most of it has been purchased to prevent additional development from occurring adjacent to the landfill. It's, it's been just a, a good purchase to, to acquire the properties more as a preventative measure. Where you see the, the old adage that good fences make good neighbors, a lot of land in a buffer zone makes a good neighbor of a landfill operation.
I would agree, I would agree. Thank you.
Just one question brings another question. So here's a question about the capacity, but more importantly, what the timeline. Based on today, when do you anticipate, or do you anticipate in the next 50 to 75 years, a landfill would need to be capped, closed? And then we'd have to find somewhere or another location?
We're continuously capping, so the landfill is developing cells. In fact, next year, we're scheduled to cap a portion of the landfill and develop a new cell. So that's just an ongoing process for us. Every time we build a new cell, we cap and close out another portion of the landfill.
So how much longer do you anticipate being able to do that with the land that you have?
Over 100 years.
Oh, good, that's great. That's what I was looking for, thank you. I won't be around to worry about it, that's all.
I'm not planning on it either.
Thank you.
Having gone through the sighting of that facility, I don't want to go through it either. Been there, done that. With that, if there are any other questions, I would welcome a motion to approve the resolution that approved the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority's budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Mr. Chair, make the motion for C3.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Item C4, resolution setting the allocation percentage for personal property tax relief in Roanoke County for the 2022 tax year. Ms. Gerhardt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Personal Property Tax Relief Act was established by the state of Virginia to provide tax relief to owners on the first $20,000 of value for their personal use motor vehicles. The tax relief block grant has been capped at $950 million for all Virginia localities for several years. Our share of the block grant is $12.2 million. Each year, we are required to compute the amount of tax relief to allocate to each citizen's personal property tax bill. The county calculates the reimbursement rate using the allocation model developed by the state. The model uses historical trends and a five-year rolling average to calculate the rate, which was based on tax years 2016 through 2021 for the current 2022 rate. Each year, we recalculate the actual percentage using the model, and it has always been within 1% accuracy. The state requires the board to adopt a resolution to set the personal property tax relief percentage each year. The percentage using the model for 2022 calculated at to be 47.45%. However, the new reports received reflected significant increases in assessed values on vehicles that would typically depreciate annually. These increases, combined with the declining impact of the PPTRA, would have a significant increase on personal property tax bills. With this in mind, staff have prepared a revised resolution for your approval to set the PPTRA rate at 83.3%, which will provide relief to taxpayers and mitigate the unprecedented increase as a result of inflation, supply chain issues, and consumer demand on vehicles. It is staff's recommendation to approve the revised resolution.
Questions? No questions?
Just a comment. I applaud this effort to propose this change. We are in busy times, trying times, that require measures like this. I read today, unfortunately, that this chip crisis is not going to get any better. In fact, with the Ukraine situation, neon gas that comes from the Ukraine and other metals from overseas that are required for chips is so important to their production. So until we get our hands around this, I definitely think this is the right move at the right time, the right place for our citizens. And I applaud staff's study and time you've spent on this. And I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens of Highlands and others in Roanoke County. Thank you.
Ms. Gerhardt. Roanoke County is receiving from the generosity of our friends in Richmond about $12.2 million in Personal Property Tax Relief Act. And what staff is suggesting now is to supplement the state's amount by 12.2 million.
Approximately 12.2, yes, sir.
And I think, to echo Mr. Norris' comments, each board member up here has heard comments, concerns from our citizens. They've seen how the values for used vehicles have substantially increased. And I think it is, for all of us, we, we want to provide additional relief, additional tax relief to our citizens. So as I understand, the revised resolution, the intent is to supplement or to increase what the General Assembly is giving us for personal property tax relief, and to, and to match that, and to provide a similar tax relief to our citizens. So I think that's a very positive step. I think it's something that we have to do for our, for our citizens. So with that, would we want the clerk to read the revised resolution so it would be in the minutes and that citizens may be watching on RV TV, whether today, or Friday, or Sunday, might be able to listen to it? So with that, unless there are any other questions, do we have a motion to adopt the revised resolution setting an allocation percentage for Personal Property Tax Relief Act in Roanoke County for the 2022 tax year?
Motion to approve.
Second?
The motion and the second. So, Madam Clerk, do you want to call the roll? Or do you want to read the resolution first?
How about I call the roll first, so I don't forget. Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Resolution setting the allocation percentage for personal property tax relief in Roanoke County for the 2022 tax year. Whereas in accordance with the requirements set forth in Section 58.1-3524(c)(2) and Section 58.1-3912e of the Code of Virginia, as amended by Chapter 1 of the Acts of Assembly 2004, Special Session 1, and as set forth in Item 503e, Personal Property Tax Relief Program, or PPTRA, of Chapter 951 of the 2005 Acts of Assembly, qualifying vehicle as defined in Section 58.1-3523 of the Code of Virginia, with the taxable, what is that? Citus within the county commencing January 1, 2022, shall receive personal property tax relief. And whereas the PPTRA directs the county to set a reduced tax rate that shall be applied to the first $20,000 of value for each qualifying vehicle for which tax relief the Commonwealth provides reimbursement funds the county, which reimbursement amount was set and capped during tax year 2006. And whereas, insofar as the Commonwealth's reimbursement amount provided to the county has remained constant since 2006, while the county's tax assessment base has grown, the degree of state-provided relief has annually declined since 2006. And whereas, in order to fully provide available tax relief to owners of qualifying vehicles, and in accordance with the provisions of the PPTRA, the board has historically set a reduced rate that would fully maximize potential reimbursement from the Commonwealth, which reduced rate has of necessity made assumptions about future revenue receipts. Accordingly, in prior years, the board's reduced rate has provided a further degree of relief to owners of qualifying vehicles that exceeded the exact amount received by the Commonwealth as reimbursement. And whereas, in recognition of the unprecedented increase in personal property values attributable to disruptions in supply chains resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, the board desires to provide additional relief to owners of qualifying vehicles by further decreasing the reduced tax rate that is applied to the vehicle's first $20,000 of value, recognizing that reimbursement from the Commonwealth will again be less than the amount of relief provided. And whereas, based on the Commissioner of Revenue's preliminary estimates of personal property receipts for tax year 2022, and based upon prior practice in setting the reduced tax rate pursuant to the PPTRA, the county, the county's finance department originally proposed to reduce the rate of taxation of the first $20,000 of qualifying vehicles by 47.45%. And whereas, the board desires to increase the amount of relief by reducing the rate of taxation on the first $20,000 of qualifying vehicles by 83.30%. And whereas this resolution is adopted pursuant to Ordinance 122005-10, adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 20, 2005, which incorporated the provisions of the PPTRA into the Roanoke County Code. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia as follows. A, that, one, excuse me, that tax relief shall be allocated so as to eliminate personal property taxation for qualifying personal use vehicles valued at 1,000 or less. That qualifying personal use vehicles valued from 1,001 to 20,000 will be eligible for the 83.30% tax relief. Three, that qualifying personal use vehicles valued at 20,001 or more shall only receive 83.30% tax relief on the first 220, I'm running out of air, 20,000 of value. And four, that all other vehicles which do not meet the definition of qualifying, for example, including but not limited to business use vehicles, farm use vehicles, motor homes, et cetera, will not be eligible for any form of tax relief under this program. Five, that the percentages applies, apply to the categories of qualifying personal use vehicles are estimated fully to use all available PPTRA funds allocated to Roanoke County by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Six, that this resolution shall be effective from and after the date of its adoption.
Thank you. I, I think this is a great step for us, that we are able to provide, I think, meaningful tax relief to our citizens. And I thank county staff, I thank the commissioner for everyone's hard work on this matter. And it's a good first step, thank you. Item D1, first reading of ordinances. An ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $119,008 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the Cortran Program. Thank you.
Hello again.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I come before you this afternoon with an ordinance requesting the acceptance of the FTA Section 5310 grant funding of $119,008 for the Cortran Program. In fiscal year 2020, 2021, Roanoke County staff applied to DRPT for funding to supplement the Cortran Program through DRPT and was approved through the funding for the $119,008 to be used in the urban portion of the county. Staff plans to submit monthly invoices for the reimbursement for the grant, and the funds are to be used by September 30th of this year. Staff recommends approval of the acceptance and allocation of the $119,008 for the FTA Section 5310 grant from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation.
Do we have any questions?
Yes, sir.
No, no questions. How in the world is Cortran able to, to limit it to urban trips? I mean, is that a, is that an accounting headache for somebody? That they have to distinguish between an urban trip and a rural trip?
Well, that would be me.
That's you, that's your headache.
Well, with county being broken into urban and rural destinations for the trip, the 5310 grant specifically designates funding for urban. We've also applied for grant funding for 5311 in the past for the rural part of the county, and was not able to successfully receive an award at that time. But we did reapply this year, and we're hopeful within the next 14 days that we will hear some very positive news to share.
Great, thank you. If there are no other questions, I would ask for a motion to approve proposed ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $119,008 from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the Cortran Program. This is the first reading, and the motion would also indicate scheduling a second reading for April 26th.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, public hearings. Item E1 is a public hearing for citizen comment on the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget and the proposed fiscal year 2023, 2032 capital improvements program. Ms. Gerhardt, again.
Hello again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comment on the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget and the fiscal year 2023, 2032 capital improvement program. This is a requirement of state code. Therefore, staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive comments.
I will open the public hearing. And if there are any citizen speakers, just to remind you, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. And we have a series of lights at the podium that will start it and warn you when you've got a minute left. And then when it gets to the blinking red light, please wrap up. Do we have any citizens who have registered?
I have no one signed up to speak.
No speakers. I will close the public hearing. Item F1, a public hearing for citizen comments on the following items, calendar year 2022, real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools taxes. Ms. Gerhardt.
This item is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comment on the calendar year 2022, real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools tax rates. The state code requires a public hearing to be held in advance of the adoption of tax rates. This public hearing satisfies this requirement. The adoption of all of these tax rates was preceded by a public hearing held on March 22nd to receive written and oral comments on setting the maximum tax rates for calendar year 2022. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to satisfy the state code requirements and receive citizen comment on the calendar year 2022, real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools tax rates.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to any one or all of these different local tax rates? Seeing and hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Item F2, item F2 is a request to adopt a resolution Item F2 is a request to adopt a resolution setting the tax rate for real estate situated in Roanoke County for calendar year 2022. Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution setting the tax rate of $1.09 per $100 rate on real estate in the county of Roanoke for the calendar year of 2022.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion with a second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item 2B, a resolution setting the tax levy on personal property in Roanoke County for calendar year 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Item F2B, which is personal property rate at $3.50 per $100 of assessed value in the county of Roanoke for the calendar year 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item C, a resolution setting tax levy, a classification of personal property, machinery and tools situated in County of Roanoke for calendar year 2022. We have a resolution in our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion for FC, approving the resolution setting the tax levy at $2.85 for the classification of personal property, machinery, and tools in the county of Roanoke for calendar year 2022.
I will second that motion. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Gerhart.
Item G on our agenda is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk? That's not. Item H, Consent Agenda. Does anyone want to remove any item from the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none? I will welcome a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
A motion is second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Citizen comments and communications. I see none. Do you have any?
No, sir. I don't have any.
Thank you. Reports. I would move that we receive and file the reports that are set out in the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Reports and inquiries of board members. Martha Hooker is first up.
I just have a couple of items, Mr. Chairman. The first one is to thank all the Catawba citizens that came out and voiced their opinions at the 200 Plan meetings. They were well attended, and we got valuable input that we need. I also wanted to especially thank our staff for all the hard work. I mean, we are expressing our appreciation. The citizens will never know how much work and toil has gone on trying to make this happen in a reasonable way for a resolution on how to overcome this and be less of a burden to our citizens. So just a hearty thank you to all of you for what you have done. And then the next issue is student recognition. And I was just handed this notice before the meeting, and they're actually K Springs students, but I'm going to go ahead and read it anyway, if it's okay with a...
Okay.
...member from the K Springs section. I am, I guess. But there were two... Two Roanoke County students earned national honors in the Scholastic Art Competition. Mary Weisinger, an eighth-grade student at K Springs Middle School, and Emmeline Sylvester Johnson, a 12th-grade student at K Springs High School and Burton Center of Arts and Technology, took home gold medals for their work. They have been invited to attend a national ceremony at Carnegie Hall in New York later this year to honor their wins. I thought that was outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norris? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Interesting article today editorial in the Roanoke Times about work zone safety is everyone's responsibility. It was written by someone at VDOT, Ken King, District Engineer for the Virginia Department of Transportation, Salem District, who we all work with, Mr. Radford and I and others at the county, Mr. Kaywood on the Transportation Planning Organization. Just want to invite everyone to join VDOT as they promote the theme this year. Work zones are a sign to slow down for National Work Zone Awareness Week, which is this week, April 11 through the 15. This week is a reminder that work zone safety is a community effort and everyone's responsibility. And so let's all keep that in mind when we're going through work zones, to be safe and mindful of the workers in those work zones. On other... Another note, again, just a big thank to staff who worked tirelessly over the last several weeks. Many people on the budget, and especially the personal property tax relief for personal vehicles. This will go a long way to offset those increased assessments on increased values. I don't think I've ever owned an automobile that is going to go up like mine is, and it's a 2019 vehicle, but many other citizens as well. So in a time where new vehicles are hard to get and produced and used vehicles are most always drive every day are going up, this is very welcome to all. Going forward this month, I've got a series of meetings coming up to represent the county. And today, I attended one, which was the Virginia Blue Ridge State Transportation Event. Dr. Ray Smoot was there from the Commonwealth Transportation Board, Delegate Terry Austin, who's Chair of the Transportation Committee in the House of Delegates, and Mike Stewart, who was just here with the Airport Authority, our Executive Director there, also served on the panel. Some points that were mentioned briefly was I-81. If they're going to request a new traffic study to affirm the fact that I-81 carries 40% of all the miles of vehicles traveled in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And Delegate Austin wants to confirm that going forward with another study, just to resonate the fact that I-81 is important and even needs more money beyond 2034 than what we've already been allocated of $2 million. So this is an important item to justify funding beyond 2034. Emphasis on the Southern Connector from North Carolina to Martinsville was also mentioned in the transportation agenda. Airport growth and economic impact, we heard about today here for our region with an expanded runway was discussed. And rail growth all the way to Bristol is something that's coming in the near future. But in the meantime, we're told that a second Amtrak train, regional train, will be coming to Roanoke sometime this summer. And I welcome that because it will have a different schedule, and you can make trips here and there a bit quicker with that second train. And by the way, the train today is the most profitable regional train in the Commonwealth of Virginia, going to and from Roanoke every day. On April 19, we hope the General Assembly will have something to share in terms of the legislative wrap-up on the state budget. If they don't, they're just going to probably tell us that they're looking forward to going back. But that's supposed to come up with one of the local chambers. And I've been asked to speak at the inauguration on April 22 of the Hollins 13th President, Dr. Mary Dana Hinton, and look forward to being there on that special day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, I too want to add my thanks and gratitude to the staff for their hard work with the budget and exactly what we went through for a couple of weeks there. And our council also having to guide us through that mirage of how to figure it out. And I agree with Mr. Norris. It's going to be a big benefit to our county when the values are going up. And that's really odd at this time. Also want to let everybody know, we met with the community up at Bit Mountain, a community group of citizens in regards to fire and rescue. We had a good meeting with them. Look forward to helping them out with their continued service up there. And also want to pass along, you know, Godspeed to our fellow board member, Jason Peters, as he's going through a medical procedure right now. That's why he's not here, as our chairman announced earlier. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No comments at this time. Item L, Work Sessions. We will have a work session to review with the board the county administrators' proposed fiscal year 2022/2023 operating budget. And Ms. Gerhart, again, is going to be on the hot seat as long as Mr... along with Mr. Elliott. So we will now recess to the third floor to a work session.